All right, thank you so much. Today is Monday, June 17th, 2024. The time is 6:00 PM. At this time, I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Ms. Garcia, could we please have a roll call?
Mayor Walter, here. Vice Mayor Mendoza is going to be absent tonight. Councilmember Larson?
Here.
Councilmember Neal?
Here.
Councilmember Bucelado?
Here.
Councilmember Maldonado?
Here.
Councilmember Adam?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you so much. At this time, I'd like to ask everybody to please rise for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. First call to the public. Call to the public for public comment on issues within the jurisdiction of the town council. Council rules limit public comment to three minutes, and individual council members may respond to criticism made by those commenting, may ask staff to review a matter raised, or I may ask that a matter be placed upon a future agenda, however, members of the council shall not discuss. Any matter during open call to the public, unless those matters are properly noticed for discussion and legal action, at this time, we do have Ms. Bonnie Barriola.
Mayor and council members. Bonnie Barriola, Maricopa County. The Historic Preservation Conference is next week, June 25th through 28th in Prescott. It's still not too late to register. $345 through June 19th, when fee increases to $395. It's going to be held at the Hussain Ampeen. Many excellent presentations explaining how others have connected their historic preservation component with current zoning. Florence was the very first certified local government in the state. Of 1:00 to 5:00 PM on Tuesday, June 25th, is the CLG training with Chippewa's architect, Arianna Urban. This is intended for certified local government staff and members of historic preservation commissions. This training session will focus on the ins and outs of running a successful historic preservation program at the local level. Chippewa staff will be presenting on archaeological compliance, design review for historic districts, educational programs, CLG grant opportunities, historic preservation plans, design guidelines, zoning ordinances, local designation, and how each component works together to build a strong citywide preservation program. Please bring your questions, ideas, and concerns as we learn about the unique challenges and opportunities Arizona's CLGs face. This conference, and I added this sentence, this conference would be advantageous to everyone involved or interested in municipal or county governments that have a historic district or CLG. I'd just like to say, I am no longer on the planning committee. I don't know who is registered for the conference. I have no idea. I just know that I'm going, and I encourage everybody who is interested in historic preservation to attend the conference. And I looked through all of the sessions they have, and there are a lot of sessions from cities and towns showing how they have incorporated the historic preservation component into the other zoning ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Barriola. We also have Mr. Mark Kaye. I want to make sure that I pronounce your name correctly, so I'm going to allow you to introduce yourself when you get up here, sir. Thank you very much.
My name is Mark Killey. I'm the post commander of the American Legion here in town, and I got a call from Paul King, I guess the new community services director, and he said, hey, it's my ideas for you guys to do, and all the ones he cited, we already did. We do them, and I think for the benefit of you, it would be nice for you to know what we actually do, other than drink cheap beer over at the post. So, as an example, all the flags up and down Main Street, we do that. We sponsor a Little League team in town, the Cheerleaders, the football team, Junior Pirata, Christmas in Action, which we give up 23 boxes of Christmas dinners to families that can't afford it, with toys that the children, those children actually want, not just something you get at McDonald's and throw on their Happy Meal. We also donate to the Fisher House, which is an organization in Arkansas, so families come in, it's kind of like a Ronald McDonald or a St. Jude's. Families don't pay a dime. We gave $3,000 to dogs for vets, those with PTSD and need service dogs. We also gave the Tucson E.A. Soldiers Home $1,000. It's a 120-bed unit down in Tucson, assisted care living. Packages from home to veterans. If anybody's a veteran in here, you know the best time of the year is when you get mail call, and you get something. So we've $3,000 towards that. And what we're doing, and the reason I bring this up, is during the summertime, if snowbirds leave, it's hard for our business to stay open, but we do. And in the past, we used to get the Series 15 Special Liquor License, and we don't get that anymore because it's out for RFP. Well, our prices are very reasonable, and the town, according to the RFP, wants a cut. I can't afford to give a cut, so all I'm asking for is just one of those licenses, and that is Road to Country Thunder. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate you taking the time to come up here and communicate, not only to us, but everybody that's watching. Councilmember Maldonado served as the commander at the American Legion, and I want to say thank you for your service, thank you for communicating. And Ms. Garcia, can we have a report as to how many of the licenses are up, and can we put that on for a discussion for council?
Would be happy to.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Is there, I see Ms. Maryann Palaya.
Hi there, Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, everybody. I've got to hurry through this because it's kind of long, so, anyway, thanks for letting me talk. I wanted to talk about the wall at well number five, which was included in consent agenda on May 20th, but no comments, no public comments were requested or taken at the time, even though the agenda says that if the public objects at the time the agenda item is called, then they should be able to talk. The request is for a $2 million-plus increase from an earlier approved amount, and the justification for this is that the well number five site will have a consistent and pleasing appearance to the neighborhood, and I'm wondering if something in the $1 million range might have an equally pleasing appearance, which I guess means, were there other options explored for constructing this wall? The only change order attached, the agenda was from March 11th, and it had two different sets of cost estimates. One totaled $503,000, the other $684,000, but nowhere could I find numbers that added up to $2.66 million, so I'm wondering where that bid estimate is. There was also a sole source cooperative use justification form, which would exempt the department from competitive bidding. The list of reasons, none were checked, except for the box that says, "None of the above", and when that box is checked, then cooperative contract information or detailed explanation should have been attached, but there was no attachment. It's my understanding that the existing law was taken down prior to approval of the bid, and my question is, if this is true, who took it down, and how was it paid for? And if the contractor took it down, how did that work without prior bid approval? And if they didn't take it down, then why are we paying them to take it down? There seems to be a lot of pertinent information missing from the packet, and I think that the public would like to see some of that, and I don't know if it's possible at this point to revisit this issue, but if it is, great, and if it isn't, I think that we would like to see a little bit more information about it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So I'm going to go ahead and give direction for Ms. Garcia, just to coordinate with whomever needs to reach out to you, because you brought up several different questions, and we will take it from there. Is there anybody else that would like to speak at this time? Closing the first call to the public and moving on to presentations and public hearings. Item A, we have PFAS National Primary Drinking Water Regulation Presentation. Ms. Paige Gangloff is not here, but within that presentation, we did have one more special presentation that we wanted to give. At this time, I'd like council to go down to the floor, as well as our interim town manager and Ms. Lisa Garcia. So this falls under part of the agenda. As with this presentation, our current deputy town manager, town clerk, also served in the role of interim town manager, not once, but twice, and we felt that it was necessary and well-deserved to present her with many thanks this evening. I'm going to turn it over to our current interim town manager for a few words, and then we'll give a presentation.
Mayor, thank you so much, council members. I am absolutely excited tonight. First of all, this is something that council has been asking us to go ahead and do, and here it is. Staff has been able to go ahead and deliver again tonight, but man, I have to go ahead and tell you, we are so thankful of the sacrifice that you have given to this town. I don't think I've seen anyone that is more dedicated to making sure that they serve the citizens of the town of Florence. I think I told Lisa at one particular time, I don't think there's anybody that works harder than me. I'm here to go ahead and tell you, that is absolutely not true. There is a young lady here that puts her life's bread into everything that she does, and I have to go ahead and tell you, I am absolutely proud of you. Council is absolutely proud of your leadership and the way that you've made this town absolutely 100% better. And with that, I'm going to give it over to the mayor, because I know the mayor wants to say a couple of words.
So councilmember Neal? We wanted to, as a council and interim town manager, present you with a plaque thanking you for your service. You always go above and beyond. Anytime any one of us has a question, and believe me, we have questions multiple times a day. We'll email, we'll call, and she is always very quick to respond. She gives us accurate information. If she does not know, she'll say, I'll have to go and look into that, and then I will get back to you. Sometimes it's that day, sometimes it's up to a few days later, and that's okay, because we value the honesty and the information and the service that you provide. So you are an excellent colleague and leader, and we want to say thank you for your service. And otherwise, she wouldn't let us honor her, so we had to find a way to get it onto the agenda.
I want to say thank you, and I believe that no one does anything alone, and while I served, it was just because of the incredible staff below me that guided me and gave me great strength and great understanding in their areas and really took their lead, and I appreciate everything the council is saying and everything our interim town manager, Bruce Walls, is saying. And I do love serving the town of Florence, and every day that we wake up to make the citizens' world a better place in the town of Florence is a good day, so thank you.
So with that, that was part of our presentation for item 6A, and we will finish the rest when the next council meeting occurs. I need a motion to adjourn to Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number 1.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All right, we have ordinance number MRCFD-1, 12124. This is discussion, possible adoption of an ordinance of Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number 1, Penau County, Arizona. Leveing the assessed evaluation of the property within the Community Facilities District, subject to taxation of certain sum upon each $100 evaluation, sufficient to raise the amount estimated to be received from funds for community facilities expenses for the fiscal year ending the 30th day of June 2025. Mr. Carl Dudding.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. For fiscal year 2025, the debt service levy is 1.5 per $100 of net assessed value. The admin levy rate is .30 per $100 of net assessed value, for a combined rate of 1.8 per $100 of net assessed value. All required advertising and public postings have been satisfied. The required public hearing was held earlier this month on June 3rd, and this is an action item before the board tonight.
Council, do you have any questions regarding this agenda item? All right, with that, we need a motion.
Make a motion to approve ordinance number MRCFD-1, 121-24. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Motion to adjourn from Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number 1?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Need a motion to adjourn to Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number 2?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, item A. This is ordinance number MRCFD-2, 221-24. Discussion on possible adoption of an ordinance of Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number 2, Penau County, Arizona, leveing the assessed valuation of the property within the Community Facilities District, subject to taxation of a certain sum upon each $100 evaluation, sufficient to raise the amount estimated to be received from funds for the community facilities expenses for the fiscal year ending the 30th day of June 2025. Mr. Carl Dudding.
Madam Chairman, members of the board, for fiscal year 2025, the debt service levy rate is 2.4106 per $100 of net assessed value. The admin levy rate is .30 per $100 of net assessed value, for a combined rate of 2.7106 per $100 of net assessed value. All required advertising and public postings have been satisfied. The public hearing was heard on June 3rd earlier this month. This is an action item for the board.
All right, council, do you have any questions or comments? Seeing none, we need a motion.
Make a motion to approve ordinance number MRCFD-2, 221-24. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Need a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn from Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number 2?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item 11 is our consent agenda, and all items on the consent agenda will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda, unless a council member or a member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. A is adoption of resolution number 1904-24. This is a resolution of the town of Florence, Penau County, Arizona, approving and authorizing Mayor Tara Walter, interim town manager Bruce Walls, deputy town manager Lisa Garcia, finance director Brian Wright, and deputy finance director Carl Dudding to act as signatories for the transaction of business on the town of Florence's bankier accounts and declaring an emergency. Item B, adoption of resolution 1905-24, a resolution of the town of Florence, Arizona Governing Board, designating the chief fiscal officer for officially submitting the fiscal year 2025 expenditure limitation report to the Arizona Auditor General. Item C, adoption of resolution 1906-24, a resolution of the town of Florence, Penau County, Arizona, certification of resolution and authorization of treasury management services and declaring an emergency. Ladies and gentlemen, that is our consent agenda. Is there anybody that would like anything removed at this time? Seeing none, we need a motion.
I make a motion to approve consent agenda item number 11.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item 12 is unfinished business. This is item A, ordinance number 737-24. Discussion, approval, disapproval of an ordinance of the town of Florence, Penau County, Arizona, leveing the assessed valuation of the property within the town of Florence, subject to taxation of certain sum upon each $100 evaluation, sufficient to raise that amount estimated to be received from funds for general municipal expenses for the fiscal year ending the 30th day of June 2025. Mr. Carl Dudding.
Mayor, members of the council, the proposed levy rate for fiscal year 2025 is 1.0289 per $100 of net assessed value, generating revenues of $1,546,284 for general fund operations. The required public hearing for public comment was held on June 3rd earlier this month. All required advertising and public postings have been satisfied. This is an action item for the council tonight.
Bless you. Is there any member of council that has any questions or comments regarding this ordinance? With that, we need a motion.
I make a motion to approve ordinance number 737-24.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item 13, new business. Nope, I still have B. I got a little ahead of myself. Ordinance number 740-24, discussion, approval, disapproval of an ordinance of the town of Florence, Penau County, Arizona, leveing the assessed valuation of the property within the street lighting improvement districts 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, and 9, subject to taxation of certain sum upon each $100 evaluation, sufficient to raise the amount estimated to be received from funds for streetlight operations for the fiscal year ending the 30th day of June 2025. Mr. Carl Dudding.
Mayor, vice mayor, excuse me, he's not here tonight, members of the council, we are placing levies on eight of the nine streetlight districts, as outlined in the RCA. District 4 has ample funding and will not have a levy this coming fiscal year. All required advertising and public postings have been satisfied. The public hearing was held on June 3rd earlier this month. This is an action item before council. If you would like, I can read the levy rates?
No, we've had them presented prior, and I didn't see any motion from anybody here or on our council, so that's all right. Thank you. All right, council, would you like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that item B, ordinance number 740-24, is approved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Item 13 is new business. A is discussion, approval, disapproval of entering into a lease agreement with Penau County for the property formerly known as Penau County Facility Management Yard, located at 121 West 22nd Street in Florence, Arizona, for initial term of one year. Ms. Lisa Garcia.
Mayor and members in council, by this action, you probably now know that we are owners of the park. Yay, council! It only took us six months to get through that purchasing process, and so as such, we had told the State of Arizona, Arizona Department of Transportation, that we would continue to lease the space that Penau County Maintenance Yard is currently leasing from the state. So what this does is it transfers the lease from the state over with the town, so then we would be there, they would be our tenants, and that would happen until such time that the maintenance yard that Penau County is currently going out to bid for to build would be built. We're expecting it will be somewhere between 18 months and 24 months, but we'll relook at the lease in 12 months. We're very excited about owning the property and doing a capital improvement plan for the property for when our maintenance team moves in. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Council, any questions or comments? There are none. With that, we need a motion for the lease agreement.
Make a motion to approve item 13A.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have our town managers' report.
Mayor, council members, I'm happy to go and announce, hopefully, one of many morning mingos. This is where our town staff is going to interact with the public. We are interested in building relationships. Our first mingle is going to be June 26th at 9:00 AM over at the community center, so we just want to go ahead and send an invite to not only council, but to all of our citizens, come on out and meet your staff. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm so glad that you're putting that together and bringing that forward. That was a great idea.
I have to go ahead and say Jeff Graves was a lot of help with getting that going.
Great teamwork. This is our second call to the public. Is there anybody either in person or online that would like to speak at this time? Ms. Maryann? We're going to go ahead and unmeet you.
Hi again, and it's Palaya. And I just want to thank you guys for approving a budget that included money for public art. And I know I talked about that once before, but I just want to say, we, the Community Services Advisory Board, we're talking about a lot of different things, and we're really thrilled to be able to implement them, and with your help and the town's help, and so anyway, we're really excited about that, and I just wanted to say thank you so much. And that's it for me tonight.
All right, thank you so much. Is there anybody else that would like to speak at this time? Is there anybody else that would like to speak at this time? All right, closing the second call to the public, there will be another opportunity at the next meeting. If anything is between here and now, just reach out to us, and we're happy to respond. Call to the council, current events only, council member Neal. Council member Adam.
I'd just like to hear Kathy talk first. First off, sorry for missing last week, or two weeks ago's meeting, I was very sick. I'm pretty sure y'all didn't want me here at that time. Stuff coming out of every end I have, so I'm glad I missed that one. Happy Father's Day, late Father's Day to all the fathers, I want to be quick here. Happy birthday to my mother tomorrow, Ms. Yula Neal. She is a very blessed lady, and tomorrow's her birthday. Thank God for her, because I wouldn't have been here. Real quick, I just want to say I spent this weekend up in the White Mountains camping, and whichever department's job it is to bring that temperature, those trees and those lakes to Florence, you are failing bad. We need you to pick it up to bring that here, because it was like 80-some degrees, and I didn't want to come back. Go Gophers, thank you.
Council member Butchalado?
How do you follow that, you know? I just wanted to say again, thank you again, Lisa, for all that you do. I know you have your hands full every time it's an election season. We know what that entails for you and the training that comes after for all the new staff and council members coming on. So I just wanted to say you are appreciated, and thank you for always answering our questions every week, every day. On top of that, I just wanted to say to our community to, you know, shop local right now and support the businesses, because it's the slow season, and with all the road construction and ADOT things happening, it's really hitting them hard. So get out there and support, eat local, shop local, and take care of them. That's it, thank you.
Council member Adam?
Yes, I have a couple of things. First of all, I'd like to thank the commander of the legion for coming in. I had no idea, really, how much went on. Mo, you didn't tell me everything. But I really do appreciate the activities, especially the gifts for children that they pick out, apparently, which is, I think, very special. I'd like to thank the town. I walk the streets daily, and I will tell you, it is noticeable that we are leading by example. Our buildings, our grounds, the police station, both fire stations, town hall, the senior center, I mean, the grounds are immaculate. I think it looks very nice, so thank you for doing that. I, along with the mayor and the chief, were lucky enough to attend the opening of our county vote building, it's our elections building, and I will tell you, we proudly, I think, have the state-of-the-art technology, the building, the space, the planning, to go into this elections with our heads held high. So they did a beautiful job. Last thing, Bonnie had mentioned about the preservation conference. My partner Reggie and I, we've been sponsors for many years. I wanted to mention to the town that one of the sessions on the first day, which is the same as CLG training, happens to be on how to recognize and evaluate a masonry structure. It's being done by one of the leading BLM master Adobe experts. And so I offer this to the town, I have an extra conference seat. I don't know where we are with the HDAC members going, but if we need an extra seat, I'm offering it to the town. Thank you.
Thank you. Council member Maldonado?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I'd like to thank council member Adams for going with me to pay our respects to Officer Breeze a couple Saturdays ago, and Chief, thank you for coming out to that. It was a very humbling moment out there, and to see all the first responders out there was amazing. Second of all, I'd like to offer my condolences to Detective Sos's family and friends of Scottsdale PD. So more to come on that. I'd like to thank the Elks for inviting us for a Flag Day ceremony. I was fortunate enough to have the mayor with me there, and I learned so much about the history of our flag, where our flag came from originally. And if you ever have a chance, look it up, it literally took 30, 40 minutes to find out our history of where our flag originally came from. And finally, thank you to all the folks that came out and helped out from Florence and from surrounding communities this last Saturday and supported the National Guardsmen here at the Florence Armory. We were able to cook burgers for them and fixings, and there was a lot of different veteran service organizations that came and helped out, and we got to meet with the families and find out a little bit about them, and basically tell them, you know, a little bit, I got to tell them about our town. I guess most of those guardsmen are from Phoenix, but I got to tell them a little bit about our town, and it was pretty cool talking to those guys and seeing the amount of volunteers that came out to share bread, to break bread with the military members. So thank you. That's all I got, thanks.
Council member Larson?
I don't really have anything, so good to go. Have a safe holiday. Safe town.
Yes, we are, we're coming on the Fourth of July festivities that will be held here in the town of Florence in just a few weeks, on Thursday at Heritage Park. Hope to see everybody there. It will be a spectacular show. I don't want to be redundant, so I'm going to just only focus on what has not been said yet, and I'd like to highlight that next Thursday on the 20th, there's going to be a third candidate forum for the positions of mayor and council. It will be held at the Florence Gardens at 6:00 p.m. and hosted by the Greater Florence Chamber of Commerce. And I also wanted to give recognition to the Greater Florence Chamber of Commerce for their recent event that was held at the Green Tree. It's their Women in Business event. They have women in business from all over Pinal County that come together, and they gather at the Green Tree. The next event is going to be on September 11. They are going to also have a special tribute there that day. We're going to be inviting women and military personnel. So if you would like to attend, I encourage you to reach out and attend. It is a wealth of information and knowledge, and I really enjoyed it. Also, Ms. Sophie Deiser and myself were just recently, I was reappointed for a second term, Sophie is starting her first term with the Arizona's First Things First Foundation, focusing on providing literacy experiences for birth through five. Among other things, we are also a daycare desert, so we have a lot of things that we're tackling with that group. So I wanted to say congratulations, Ms. Sophie is here in the audience, and I look forward to working with you in that capacity. That is all I have this evening. At this time, we need a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.